I'd like to call the regular board meeting for March to order and let the record reflect that we are missing Mrs. Bush, who will not be here for the entire meeting, and we anticipate Mr. Renner joining us later.
Mr. Renner's here.
I mean, sorry, I was looking at Mr. Hosmer. So with that, will you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have a special recognition tonight?
Yes, yes, we do, and Dr. Anderson's going to be doing this, and you should have seen him in shorts, boxer shorts.
Please, Norm, Norm, Norm.
Anyway, too much information, Norm.
Go ahead, Dr. Anderson.
Go ahead, go ahead.
My outfit every third Friday night. So it's good to be with you this evening. We have here a special recognition. The Missouri Association of Elementary School Principals is an association for specifically elementary through middle school level principals, and its purpose is to unite the principals, the early years principals, in their purpose and advocate for what is best for kids and teachers across the state, especially as we have our voice known at the state level. And we also get together once a year for our learning conference, and we celebrate each other and some of the achievements of our principals. And we have, the district, the association is split into 13 districts. Springfield is large enough and fortunate enough to be our own district, and so every year we have the opportunity to recognize our own principals at the state level for the things that they do. And tonight, I'm happy to bring three of our principals who've just done an outstanding job, and I'm bringing them forward one at a time. First, I'd like to have Kami Cardwell come forward. Kami is the Assistant Principal at Hickory Hills, and she was recognized as M.A.E.S.P.'s Outstanding Assistant Principal. When asked about Kami's strengths, she doesn't, she has a great understanding of the culture of the elementary building, and that's been significant, especially for Principal Sarah Autumn, as she's transitioned from high school down to the elementary and middle school world, and she's been a lifesaver for Sarah personally. And we know that Hickory Hills has continued to be successful because of Kami's skill level and interest and heart in making sure that they continue the great things that are going out at Hickory. So please join me in recognizing Kami Cardwell. Next, Sarah Shevchuk. Sarah, if you'll come forward. Sarah is in her third year as the principal at McGregor. Sarah always has a smile on her face, and she was recognized as an M.A.E.S.P. exemplary new principal. That is an award giving to any principal that has three years or less of service. And so when asked about what Sarah does, her colleague said about her, and something that I've experienced as well, she has high expectations. She leads by example, and when making decisions, she always does what's right by kids. And so please join me in celebrating Sarah as an exemplary new principal. And we have James Grandin. James, as you know, is our principal at Boyd Elementary, and he was selected to represent Springfield as a Missouri distinguished principal, and that, we had a nice, wonderful banquet on Saturday night honoring all of the representatives. And on Monday night, when they come back for our celebration event, they select one that will go to Washington, D.C. as our Missouri National Distinguished Principal, and James was honored with that label this year. When you think about James, I think if you've been to Boyd, you know that he has a special strength in making creative utilization of space that doesn't exist. But besides that, we know that he's inquiry-based as a person. He is reflective in nature, and he's very purposeful in his demeanor, and we couldn't have a finer example as a Missouri and national distinguished principal representing Springfield. James, congratulations. James will have the honor of going to the National Distinguished Principal in celebration in October and represent the state of Missouri, and it's always great to have a Springfield person back there representing as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
By the way, I may say, Dr. Anderson was also recognized on his way out as president of the association, so congratulations on that.
Well, we know that site-based leadership is really the key to success of our students and the support of our staff, so thank you to each of you for the work that you do each and every day, and you make us very proud. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Moving into the president's report, I'll keep it very brief, but I think from the last time that we met, we've actually hired a new superintendent, signed a contract, and I would just again like to thank our community, our staff, our teachers, students, parents, community leaders that came out in support of that, the entire effort. And then I publicly thanked last time the individual staff members that really went above and beyond to support the board's efforts, and then to each of the board members for the extra time that you dedicated to your public service. I think we are in good hands moving forward, so thank you for that. In addition, I did speak at Good Morning Springfield that Thursday of that week. I'm trying to think what else. I've been on the road all day, so I'm a little road buzzed. So anything else that board members have been doing in the community that you'd like to point out? Hopefully, we'll have a chance to get out to some schools now that the weather's nicer and lots of activities. Okay, moving on, Dr. Ritter?
Yeah, I would like to also congratulate the board on the selection of John, Dr. Jungman. Great, great selection. And I think Brian Fogle said it well, it's kind of a movement away from the, what do they call us, babies? Anyway, to the millennium types of people, and so it's a change that's going to happen across the community, and I think we're kind of doing a start here. Couple other things I want to mention. We are, I'm in the middle of visiting with schools, and a lot of exciting things that are happening in the schools. I was at Westport, and Westport, sitting down, having a conversation with Gary Too. I thought Westport did a phenomenal job with the critical situation that occurred there, and the follow-up on that has been really very, very good. Good healing that's occurring there, and a lot of neighborhood support. What's really very powerful about Westport, and I want to say it publicly, is their parent support, and I think it's really surprising to a lot of people how the parent support, not for just that incident, but since the new building has been in place, the parent support has become very, very strong, and it's really exciting to see that happen in the West Side. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that, and so we're having those types of conversations and feel that things are going well. I still do feel we're going to have a little bit more struggle with weather, if I may say. I won't give you the date, but I do feel we're going to have more of a struggle with that in the future, and I hate to say that, and I'm a farmer. Farmer's all a mackus saying it, and so I just want to give you a heads up on that. But I think our response team has been very, very good, especially Rick Emling, Dave Bishop, Tom Tucker, Dr. Harrell. Phenomenal, phenomenal ability to make good decisions and good recommendations on that. So that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Section eight talks about action that we took at the March 4 study session, which was the resolution authorizing the sale of the bonds. And we do, because of some timing of some bids and decisions, we do have three items under separate consideration that we'll need to vote on tonight, right?
Well, you missed, you missed the ongoing.
Oh, gosh, sorry about that.
No, you're in a hurry.
I think my mind is someplace else. Okay, going back to seven, we'll count backwards.
Okay, people were panicking. Ms. Palmer, please.
This evening, we have, as a read-only information item, health and wellness services, student records and attendance, their status update from the last six months. For the full report, we have one Tier One of English language learners and Tier Two of nutrition and information technology. So we'll start with Tier One, and I'll ask Mrs. Rhonda Hittenberg Ortiz to join me.
Hello, good to see you all. Just want me to start? All right, a couple highlights I wanted to talk about tonight. Last year, we mentioned the percentage of students who are eligible for services that are actually receiving full-time services from an ELL specialist is down in the, was down in the low 60% range. That has come up a little bit. We did add a couple sites and an additional teacher, so we're about in the mid-60% range of students who see an ELL specialist on a regular basis at an ELL site. Of course, we still have that in the red because we would like for there to be access to that ELL specialist at every location. I want to point out, it kind of goes with a goal two, number one, the number of sites that offer regular targeted ELL services is 10 out of our 52 buildings. We do have a comparable district table that's here that compares our district with the other top ELL populations in the state, and you can see that our number of ELL teachers per building is the lowest out of those top, those top numbers that we have there. So again, that's something that we're really hoping to increase. So the, let's go down to goal two, number four and five. This is why we want to have more specialists helping our kids on a full-time basis. We studied grades three through eight ELL students who are in ELL sites getting full-time services versus grades three through eight ELL students not in ELL sites, and the effect size for their performance series math, reading, and language arts was higher for those students getting regular support from the ELL specialist. So that's really a huge reason why we need to have more specialists in the district. Some of the things that went well this year, number two, technology. We were able to increase the technology that our teachers have available to them. We're able to purchase 45 computers, laptops, so that our ELL specialists can build the technology skills that our kids really need. Okay, so that's what I wanted to point out on that page. Any questions? Yeah.
You have, we have fewer students than some of our comparable districts, but they're spread out more. Is there any ability to share a staff person or consolidate? I know students probably don't want to move from one school to the other. That would be wonderful, but.
Well, that is our system now. We have 10 buildings, and we call them ELL sites. So for example, for high school, Central is our ELL site, so we encourage ELLs who enroll at any of the high school sites to be bused to Central. And so that's a parent choice, and many, well, 35% of parents choose not to do that.
Do we know why?
They, most of the time, they want their kids in a nearby school. Some of them live across the street or down the street from the school, and they just prefer to have them nearby.
Even, even though they know they won't be getting the types of services that they would get at one of the district programs?
For some reason, our middle school parents/kids, because we know kids have an influence once they get to middle school on their parents, too. Middle school tends to decline more than the other grades. So we have two ESL middle school sites, but fewer students attending those that could attend those. And even if the child is bused, a lot of times the parents say, well, what if there's an emergency and I can't get there? So there's a lack of transportation sometimes, too, that causes that decline.
I have a couple questions on, I mean, do you want to continue? Are you finished with what you want to present?
Just on the systems review that we can talk about.
I, one of your key opportunities for improvement, you talked about increased interpreter/translator services available for parents, and we know that it's extremely important, the parent involvement piece, especially with our ELL students. So do you have an approximate cost? And I know next step's three, it says permanently increase the ELL district budget by $9,000. Would that take care of that need to have a, I mean, to have that interpreter, those services available? Because I know they're expensive, and it's not always easy to find someone to interpret into a specific language, but.
Right. An interpreter is expensive. Translating documents can be even more expensive. And since our numbers are up in the, over 1,000, almost 1,100 of language minority students, last year, we had to borrow $9,000 from another account to cover. This year, we have borrowed it again with the anticipation that we will just have it next year to start with. So it should cover for another year or so, depending on, you know, the rate of growth of families.
But if your budget is increased to the 40,000, that 9,000 would be recurring. You would get that every year, so that would be.
That would be the regular.
Helpful, then you wouldn't have to borrow.
Right, right. Until, you know, such time as it grows doubles or whatever, but yeah.
Thank you. Are we at full capacity at what we would consider the program, the district sites? Are we at capacity in terms of being able to accommodate students that might?
It depends on what you call capacity. Our smallest number of students that are on a caseload for an ELL specialist would be 45. At Central High School, we have over 100 students with one ELL specialist, one para. At McGregor, we have 100 with two ELL specialists there. So we would, of course, prefer for the student-teacher ratio to be much lower.
Do we receive any funding from the federal government or the state government towards this?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. This, this program is considered a district program, so salaries, curriculum, anything that gives equal access to English language learners is expected to be funded by the district. We get federal funds for anything that's supplemental, and supplemental would be after-school tutoring. We hire an instructional coach that works around the district. Those are considered supplemental, so some technology, summer school, things like that. So it's a combo, but the majority of the funding does come from the district because it's considered equal access.
But is this a federally mandated program?
Yes.
That the district bears the majority of the cost for? Like many others. Yeah, the long line.
I want to make sure, you said 35% of the students elect not to go, or they do go?
Elect not to go.
Not to go, okay. I want to make sure I had the right number.
We call them declined. They're not declining services, they're declining transferring schools. Something that Jill just passed out to you is the local, well, it's a Southwest Missouri Spanish language newspaper. There's a circulation of 2,500 to 3,000, and we were able to start in January having a page that's just dedicated to SPS. So if you look at, if you look at page three, we write an article every month, and they translate it for us, and then have important dates. There's tips for registering your student for kindergarten. We've had snow day tips, how to access, how to weatherize, things like that. So we just feel like this is such a great opportunity for our Spanish-speaking parents to get school information, and we have different topics every month. So we're having different teachers write articles. We're going to have a section on graduations, so we can interview some graduates for April and May. So I just wanted you to have one of those.
This is a private publication, or is it underwritten by?
I think it's private. It's just funded by the ads, the mini ads.
Well, my thought being that it's pretty, a pretty inexpensive way for the district to communicate, and if we were to have to, you know, do some reimbursement for all the support, I think that's something that Teresa would gladly take out of her budget.
Well, they have a Facebook page, too.
Yeah.
We have a partnership with them, and they've been very generous.
Great. That's super. I mean, this is a great way to reach people.
They also have Facebook and Twitter, and they get out information, the stuff that we can't wait until next month to publish, they'll put on their Facebook page to get out, too. And they will deliver these to anybody that wants them. So around the district, any schools that want them, they deliver them to Spanish teachers and field and boy, probably.
Okay, go ahead.
On your goal two, 2.1.6, number of students participating in ELL after-school tutoring, and although I know you're still in the red there, you're not where you want to be, but this looks like a significant increase from last year to this year. So could you talk a little bit about what you did? I mean, is that just an increase in overall numbers of students?
Yeah.
That accounted for that, or did you do something? Are you doing something special to kind of?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it's actually on our key strengths on the review. Number five, we really made a point this year to have more partnerships with the universities. So there's so many student, education students coming out of these programs, and a lot of them do not have a lot of multicultural experience, so they're looking for it. The teachers were looking for it, and we knew where to plug them in. So a lot of that is just having volunteers, and not just volunteers, but education-trained volunteers. So that's one reason that it's increased particularly in those three buildings.
And is that your responsibility to facilitate that process?
Yes.
Because I'm sure that's very time-consuming and.
I coordinated. The teachers are great. Generally, if there's a teacher at the university that wants to plug their kids in, their students in, they call one of the specialists, and the specialist organizes it at the site.
Any more questions?
I had one other thing I just wanted to point out. On key strengths, number six, we do have 62 identified migrant students, so that's another piece that we've added this year. So we have a migrant liaison who is paid by Title Funds. That's a Title I C fund, and so we're able to work with the families. It's birth through high school, birth through 21, and we work with the families, and we're also offering a summer school program that's just for migrant students this July.
Thank you so much.
Right, thank you.
Excellent, good job.
So on to tier two. Are there any questions for nutrition?
Any questions? Okay, go ahead, Denise.
Okay, key opportunities for improvement. Three, while breakfast meals are increasing, lunch is decreasing. Does anyone want to speak to that? What may be going on there, or? I mean, I'd rather not guess. I'd kind of like to hear from someone what's going on there. Don't be scared.
If you see this across the nation with the new regulations, I mean, the whole wheat, the whole grain, the low sodium, a lot of the companies are still trying to get on board to get their products available that will meet the nutrition guidelines, so that's been a big part of it. So we are working with vendors and Springfield Grocery and trying to find new products to get new items out to the kids right now, so.
So this kind of means that children are, students are choosing, less are choosing to not have lunch at school?
Correct.
Okay, and you think it's because the meals are healthier?
I can imagine.
If you look in the trash cans, there's a whole lot of meals getting dumped that it's, it's really, it's not just us. It's nationwide, meals are getting dumped all over the country.
And we are in the process of putting some information together to come back to share some of the updates for next year that the USDA is putting in place, which will take it to another level. So that will be coming very shortly.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
And our second choose here tonight is information technology. Is there any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Green?
Okay, so just as a formatting reminder, on the status updates, the information that's in blue is the update, and if there's no blue on that page, that means everything's still in process. There's nothing to update at this point.
I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Rick Green on all his work as far as rolling out the bandwidth, the technology. It's major right now, huge, so Steve's done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, I think.
Now you go there.
We'll go to section nine, Mr. Todes, property, auto liability, and crime insurance.
Thank you. The district's property, auto, liability, and crime insurance policies will expire on March 31. While we didn't market the full package because of a larger increase in the school board legal liability and employment practices liability coverages, we did market that. The end result is an increase of $46,000, and the grand total is $976,000, and I would like to invite Richard Allis to the podium to kind of talk about the market.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I wanted to give you just a brief executive overview of the insurance renewal this year. As Mr. Todes mentioned, in 2013, last year, if you remember, we aggressively marketed and sought competitive bids on the district's insurance. It is our recommendation that the district not go to the marketplace every single year, and the reason why is, is because you get what we call market fatigue. In other words, the underwriter sees the account every single year and becomes a little bit callous to, here it comes again, am I really going to stand a chance at writing this? And so this year, we took a strategic approach and negotiated our renewal, and it worked out very favorably. I'd like to let you know that the general marketplace, meaning for all businesses, including school districts, is firm, and what I mean by that is the market is increasing a little bit, an average of 3% to 7%. We were at the very, very low end of that spectrum. As we looked at the district's exposures, meaning the growth of the district, we had a 3% increase in teachers and students, and so that obviously causes premiums to go up. We added an additional seven power units, or buses, to our fleet, and we also do replacement cost appraisals on all the buildings every year to keep us up to date so we're able to make sure that we can replace the district's buildings. That went up 3.4% this year. And so as Mr. Todes mentioned, the one area that we did go out to the market on was the educators' legal liability, because we are seeing some increases in that area, and so we were proactive, and we were able to replace that policy around what we were paying last year. So overall, we were very pleased with the renewal, although up 5%, 3% of that was attributable to growth. Be happy to answer any questions or accept any comments you might have.
Are there any questions of Mr. Allis? It's a helpful overview, thank you.
That's great. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? A move by Mr. Lee, seconded by Dr. Prater, that the Board of Education authorizes administration to place property, auto, liability, and crime insurance policies through Allis and Company Incorporated for $976,104 for a term of 12 months, ending March 31, 2015.
Thank you.
Mr. Went.
Good evening again, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Ritter, it's my pleasure to bring this action item to you this evening, and this is related to the kitchen equipment that will be part of the 2013 bond project for Glendale High School. On February 8th and 9th, advertisements for the bids were published. We received and opened the bids on February 27th. See the attached bid tabulation, and there were three bidders for this. I will tell you, initially, when we were first under design, we anticipated around 225,000. As we refined the design, we were really anticipating right around 200,000, and as you can see, our recommendation for this evening actually came in at $164,804. The bond, the funds are available within the 2013 bond funds, and it is the recommendation of administration that the board authorizes the superintendent or his designee to approve Feller's fixtures base bid in the amount of $164,804 for kitchen equipment at Glendale High School.
Are there any questions of Mr.? Are there any questions of Mr. Went? This, Fellers is local, right?
Yes.
I'll ask that for Andy. Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
The move by Dr. Prater, seconded by Dr. Frederick, that the Board authorizes a superintendent or his designee to approve Fellers Fixtures base bid in the amount of one hundred sixty-four thousand eight hundred and four dollars for kitchen equipment at Glendale High School.
Thank you.
Mr. Todes?
While we're waiting, Glendale Kickapoo had a great start yesterday in spite of all the reorganization that's going on in their facilities. And so, compliment the staff and the kids. The, the student councils were in charge of that. So, congratulations. Okay, Steve.
Treasurer's report. If you'd please open up the attachment in your board docs. Looking at the financial statement, the combined current and delinquent property taxes were up six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars from last February's collections. That's a very nice increase. So, fiscal year-to-date, we're up about three and a half million dollars, which is tracking very closely to, to budget. Sales tax collections for the month were down one hundred and sixty-one thousand from the previous February's collection. However, year-to-date, we're still up four hundred and sixty thousand. And we have received the March sales tax collections, and that's up sixty thousand from last month, March. Looking at the financial statement, also the other local revenue, you'll see that it is only at seventy percent for this year-to-date compared to ninety-two point eight percent last year. And that's attributable to the, the placeholder that we have in there for the transportation facility of about three and a half million. If we back that out, that seventy percent would increase to about ninety-two percent, which compares favorably to last year. In addition, if we backed out the transportation amount, the year-to-date revenue percentage would increase to about eighty point seven percent, still a bit down from last year's eighty-three percent, but, but not significantly down. Also, total federal revenue, you'll see it's only at sixty-two percent versus seventy-two percent last year. The great majority of federal revenue are grants. So, therefore, if the revenue's going to be down, the expenditures will be down a like amount. Speaking of expenditures, we're right at fifty-three percent year-to-date this year compared to fifty-five percent at this time last year. So, we're about two percent better than we were last year. And the bulk of that is in salaries and benefits where, that's, that's where you want to see that. Because salaries and benefits, they are what they are and they can exceed budget. They're the one area that can exceed budget. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move by Mr. Lee, seconded by Dr. Prater, that the Board approves the treasurer's report as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve all the routine action items, which included a lot of minutes from [laughing] a lot of different special meetings?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that you, Chris? It's been moved by Mr. Lee, seconded by Mr. Renner, that the Board approves each of the routine action items as submitted. Is it coming? There we go. And then the general consent items for information that was presented to us at the study session?
Move for acceptance.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move by Dr. Prater, seconded by Mr. Renner, that the Board approves each of the routine, no, each of the general consent, sorry, that the Board approves each recommendation submitted by the administration in general consent items. Under twelve, there's just a reminder of the information we received at the study session, that good report on the learning model and continuous quality improvement. Are there any public comments?
No.
Moving on to legislative report. Does anybody have anything that's immediate that we need to tend to?
Just basically tax code. That's about it. And then transfer. That's about it.
And they're on spring break?
They're on spring break, so we're safe for a week.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything under future issues?
I just have a couple of things. Our student sign-up for our choice initiatives, our innovations, is very good, very strong. And so, the other thing, staffing, staffing of those programs, the Discovery Center as well as the Mercy Program. I guess we had over thirty applicants for the Mercy Program. How many did we have? I can't remember. It's quite a few for the Discoveries.
Seventy.
Seventy for the Discovery Center. So, huge interest by teachers. And so, it's exciting. And so, anyway...
From both internal and external candidates?
I, I don't have that answer.
Wow. Seventy internal?
Yeah. So, anyway, we...
Yeah, okay. That'd be helpful to know.
But as we get the data, we'll, we'll bring the data to you. But it's exciting stuff. So, okay. Future issues.
I have it right here. Yep. We'd like to recommend that the first budget session of, for this next year's budget be Thursday, April seventeenth. Does that work for people?
Mr. Rosenberg, I thought you, yeah, there you are.
He's here.
Can you make that?
Are we talking, well, we were talking like late afternoon for what?
No.
Okay.
I have a five o'clock.
Okay.
Not a good way to start, Tim.
How about a, how about a morning? Would that work for people? And if we can't get that date set? I'll have, I'll have Mrs. Luton send out.
I'm curious what Tom has to say about this.
Yeah, we don't want to hear that.
Just don't have a word to say about that.
Would a Thursday morning work? Of course, Mr., the, will you just send out an email to people about that date in particular?
That morning, yeah.
No, I'll be in Harrisburg this week.
Oh, well, we need you here. Well, so you weren't going to be here that night either then, right?
I, this is the first I heard of it.
Oh, okay. Little communication issues. Well, why don't you go ahead and, yeah, the administration figure out some proposals and send out to the Board in terms of options.
Will do.
And then, this is also the meeting that we have agreed to have individual board members indicate their interest in being considered or serving as an officer. So, if there are people that, I think we'll just go down the road or down the line, down the road, and indicate, and that's just so it's public knowledge. So...
I'd be happy to serve anywhere the Board wants me to. Be happy to.
I would do the same, although my preference would be not to have a officer position next year.
I'll be happy to serve as an officer next year.
I don't know. I guess, you don't want to say no, but probably not. No. Let's let some other people do that.
All right. And I guess, I'm not really sure where Mrs. Bush or Mr. Hosmer are. All right. Is there anything else under other?
I can bring just one thing.
Yeah, sure.
I know several of us are going to the NSBA meeting in April. We don't meet before then. I, one of the things I just wanted to bring up was, and hopefully Teresa will get it, get involved in some of this, is the new national campaign that NSBA's started, the Standing Up for Public Ed, for Public Schools.
That's right, yeah.
Really, really strong campaign on getting out front of public education instead of all the rhetoric that we're hearing that other people are talking about. NSBA is really pushing. And one of the things that's been really good is the people that we've got to be spokesmen for public education, including Saul Khan, who's now public speaker, is an advocate for public education, and Montel Williams and Magic Johnson. Those three are the spokesmen for this campaign. And it's really going really good. One of the things that was part of the deal with Montel Williams is Four Years a Slave. NSBA's pushing really hard, not pushing, part of the deal with Montel Williams was that would be in every high school in the history curriculum, would be that film would be included in the history...
Twelve years.
Do I say Four Years?
Yeah.
Twelve Years a Slave. Sorry, but I haven't seen it yet, so I don't know. But the producer, when they got the Academy Award, was wearing one of the bracelets.
I saw that.
If you noticed that. And so, it's pretty exciting what they're doing with that whole campaign. And you're going to hear about it when, and New Orleans is pretty heavy, when Magic will be there to kick it off. But I just think it's something that we need to be looking at. I know Missouri's going to be, MSBA's looking at it. And hopefully, we as a district can look at it, too, with some of the campaign.
Be great.
I don't want to call it campaign, promotional information about public education, public schools. And it's time for us to stand up and support public education instead of fighting back all the rhetoric from the...
I'd just like to say Magic Johnson and I are products of Lansing, Michigan Public School System.
I knew you'd be excited about that. Oh, he went to school there in Lansing?
Yes, he did.
I did not know.
Yeah, he broke the junior high scoring basketball record against a team that, I went to a different school that I was a cheerleader for. And then he broke the high school record against a team that I was cheering with. So, yeah, he was always on the opposing team.
You guys are tight, then.
Yeah, we're real tight, yeah.
That's good.
It's nice to see him step up like that.
That's neat.
Anything else under other? We digress a little bit. You received the financial and operations report under separate cover. Do your plus deltas. We do need a vote to go into executive session. So, is there a motion to that regard?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
One second.
The move by Dr. Prater, seconded by Dr. Frederick, that the Board meets an executive session to discuss real estate as provided in section six, ten, point zero two one, two RSMO.
Make me feel crippled.
Is that a record?
Got to help you.
Is that a record?